Good evening. I'll now call the City of Cannon Falls, City Council meeting for Thursday, for Tuesday, October the first, two thousand and thirteen to order. Roll call.
Councilmember Duncan?
Here.
Holes?
Here.
Johnson?
Here.
Mattson?
Here.
McCusker?
Yep.
Scholblum?
Here.
And Mayor Robinson?
Here. All please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the meeting. At this time, the Chair will take a motion to approve the amended agenda.
So moved.
All second.
I do have one case. I apologize. I had this whole two and eight days. Okay. Thankfully enough, we can move on item eight A. We were able to resolve that without having to bring anything to the council for any sort of discussion or decisions or anything like that. So that's good. So we can pull eight A off the agenda.
Okay. Then the Chair will take a motion to approve the amended agenda again, minus item eight A.
So moved.
And all second.
A motion by Merle, second by Bill. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries. Moves us on to public input. Citizens may speak to issues not on the agenda. Before speaking, please give your name and address for the minutes, and please limit your comments to three minutes.
Tom Schrampski, I live at three oh five North Oak Street. I'm up on the east side project. Hope services and roads put in there, adjust them. Nobody all hears what they're listening to.
Is it on, on, Aaron?
Yeah, it's on.
Testing? Yep, great. Tom Schrampski, I live at three oh five North Oak Street up on the east side. I'm involved with the new development, the project up there, the streets and the services. I guess my question was, some of the completion dates, are they going to hold to them? And what are they? I don't think anybody's here to, is anybody here to answer any of that stuff? I have a few questions. I've talked to the project manager, this John Kempers, and sometimes I feel like I'm getting a little bit of runaround. He's been pretty good most of the time, but I'm not getting a straight answer on a few things. That's why I'm here. What's done is done up there right now. The street is not exactly what I thought it was going to be. And I'm more concerned about my landscaping around my property, which I brought up since day one. Anybody drives around my area, looks like I'm really down in a fishbowl right now. I had a kind of a high bank in the corner. We talked about retaining walls, and I don't think it's going to happen. I had maybe fifty feet of big banking. Now I've got over a hundred feet of big banking. As far as mowing this, I don't know if it's going to continue or not, or where the water runoff is going to be. I'm more or less concerned about the snow plowing, not the rainwater staying out in the street. I'm worried about the snow plowing. They've come over as close to my trees as possible without removing them. They've got a pretty steep bank right now. And they dug out all the rock, and they pushed it into my yard, and they buried it with this other grate of whatever. And so they can't even feather it in. And I'm wondering what's going to be done with this. I've talked to this John Kempers about this, and I might get what I've got there, and I'm not happy with it. That's why I'm here.
Well, as far as the actual what they did to it, I'll have our engineer in Public Works try to get out there and take a look, and we'll make sure we get it right with you. If you want to throw your phone number on there, too?
Yeah, sure.
I'll have those guys give you a call tomorrow, and they'll get out there and take a look at it with you. We'll get your concerns addressed, and we'll get it to a place where you feel, you know, feel comfortable.
Usually home about four o'clock every other week, but a little concerned about that.
We'll get that part fixed. We'll have them take a look at it and get it figured out to what, you know, what it is.
On the back road, the south side of the house, they took that knoll down a little bit, but then they raised it further west.
Okay.
So that makes my embankment higher yet.
Okay.
And it's really steep there, and I don't believe it's, can take it with lawnmower.
Okay.
I mean, I can see where it's going to be nicer for the city plow guys. That's going to work convenient for them.
Okay.
But I'm worried about where the water runoff is going to be on this when they snow plow. Of course, the road is a little wider now, and I'm real concerned about that.
We'll have them out there tomorrow. Well, we'll have them call you tomorrow, and whenever you're available, we'll have them out there to meet with you and get it figured out. That's for sure. And as far as the dates and stuff, they are past their completion date. Completion date was end of September. I was just looking to see if I could find it.
It's supposed to have been done on the twentieth, and the final is October eleventh.
Yep. So every day that they're not, we have financial penalties. So we're accruing penalties as we speak now. So once-
You're collecting from this?
We don't collect from them yet. We accrue the penalties till they're done, then we'll know how many days it is and all that stuff. So, but they do have financial penalties for not completing on time, yes.
So you do expect them to be done on the tenth, the eleventh of October, the final?
I'm not sure if they'll be done for the final by then. I, you know, I talked to the engineer today. He was out. You know, there's obviously, you know, we've, there's landscaping stuff on that south side and everything that's still-
Not only mine, I'm the only one here for my property, but there's other neighbors-
They're not done at all. And then we also have a gas line that has to be moved, and we have to wait until they come in and actually move it to finish some of that, but that's only a small portion.
They're starting to install just the other day, the main gas lines.
So-
Do they leave the old gas lines underground? They don't take them out, or they just leave them there, huh?
They usually remove.
Tom, we want to make sure, though, I mean, if you've got complaints about it, we want to make sure that it's done right. I mean, we don't want people to be dissatisfied with the job that they've done up there.
There's other names I got questions to. I guess I'm the only one speaking up, I guess. But I'm more, my property, my issues, and when the completion was going to be. What was the other thing, the other question I had?
Make sure to do that, if you've got to schedule something, that if you have to take time off and work so everybody's on the same page and can meet you at the right time, or if somebody has to stay after a little bit, work to meet you after four o'clock or whatever, make sure you and Aaron get that all figured out, and they'll take care of all that.
I know. I've talked to some of the other neighbors, and they're only concerned about their issue. Well, don't worry about them. That's their problem. And I hate to see things just all of a sudden it's done, and they move on to the next project.
Well, and the good thing to remember is, too, is that they were, they were out this year fixing issues with the West Side project. And that was completed, you know, over a year ago. So we have a warranty period with them for at least a year after the project's done where they have to come back and fix it. So we're not going to, even if people don't realize problem, until next spring, they'll be back, and they'll fix it. We'll make sure.
When they complete the ends of the driveways with blacktop or, if that's what I've got, do they do that when they put in the final road then, at the same time?
Yep.
Okay. All right. Other than that, I think that's about all I got.
Thanks for coming in, Tom, and letting us know about that, because, I mean, like I said, if anybody else has got problems with the project, we can't get it fixed unless we know about it. So, thanks.
I have the same thing, Erin.
Sorry, I'm coming down.
It wasn't so bad before. For reasons, it's kicking in now.
I'm Reverend Barbara Martin. I'm here representing the Community Churches Interaction Council, or CCIC. Last spring, we voted to purchase a peace pole, which is back here. The one that was on the river down by Minnieska Park was taken away by the flood. And the churches got, we get together four times a year, and they thought it was important as a message of peace to have the peace pole. I've been in conversation with Public Works' Tom Bergeren, and he was Dave Pagel who came and helped us figure out where to put it, but apparently more people wanted input, and he invited me to come tonight. So I'm not quite sure why, or, but just to let you all know what's going on, I guess. And then we'll figure out. We've been working with the city about where to put it. So, don't know if anybody has questions or-
Well, and I think Public Works talked about it today. I couldn't make that mean I had a different one, but-
Yeah, we discussed that, and at least some of my concerns was having a religious or political type things on city property. A separation of church and state, of course, is an important tenet in our country. And I had concerns, because I had heard that you guys had thought maybe you wanted to put it near the Veterans Memorial that's going up.
Yeah, we talked to them.
And that's how I first heard about it. And I didn't think that was the proper place. I thought maybe one of the other parks might have been a better idea. I understand why you don't want it at Minnieska, because occasionally it does flood. But a point was brought up to me that, well, if you're going to have it on one city property, does it matter which one? And that's when a point was made to me that, you know, separation of church and state, if we put it on, while individually may not be offensive to anybody or whatever, then some other group might come along and want, well, gee, you let this church group do this, well, can we do this? And it could theoretically snowball. Is there a way that your group would maybe consider, you mentioned there was like four churches that you guys-
No, it's every church in town.
Oh, every church, okay.
Absolutely.
If there was a way that you guys could maybe put it at a prominent location at one of the churches, or?
Well, we felt like it was not a religious message. As you can see, the message is, may peace prevail on earth. It's in eight different languages. So it's not affiliated with any religious organization whatsoever. It's just a message of wishing for peace. It's an international organization that has no affiliation with churches at all.
Right. But you can understand where some will consider it that, and-
If it doesn't have-
I suppose.
I mean, if it doesn't have-
I find that it's-
Talks about different, as long as it doesn't have other religion stuff on it. I mean, if it's in different languages, I mean-
Yeah, it isn't like a Psalm or something like that.
But I'm worried about the ripple effect.
Yeah, I know what you're saying, Bill, and I think you make a very good point. Merlos, were you at the meeting today?
Yes, and I agree with Bill.
And what was your take on it?
I don't think we should allow it in any of our parks. I think it should be either on a piece of property that this organization has purchased, or let it travel between the churches. That's my take on it.
I guess I'm a little disappointed, because I thought it would be accentuating the park and a place for people to contemplate what it means, also as a nod to our veterans who fought for peace. It doesn't have to be there. But I guess we assumed that since it was on the river at one point, that it wasn't going to be an issue now. So I don't know who put it there or how long it was or-
I mean, is it, I mean, has anybody seen what it looks like?
Would you like me to bring it forward so you can see it?
Oh, that, I think we could see it. But, you know, I guess I understand all your concerns there. I'd be very concerned if it was Bible verses on it or something. And the way our country has gone the last few years, it really seems that peace is an awful important word out there. Between kids being shot and everything else, it's, to me, it's like the world has kind of gone crazy on us. I think this is a symbol to think about peace, to think about brotherly love and getting along and stuff. I don't look at this as a religious thing. But I would wish that some of the other council members, I mean, I wasn't at the meeting today, so I didn't get in on the discussion, and I don't want to sit here and have all the answers, but I don't, I guess the worst thing is if we had a snowball effect and we did this, then we have to cut everything off and stop. So I don't know if I'm worried about this being some kind of a stepping stone. And I realized our churches got together and should have a voice in our community, too. And they did keep the religious factor out of it. So I feel a little bit weird about turning them down. And there was the sign there before. We're just replacing it the way you understand. So I would like the other council members to comment on their thoughts.
Any other political folks?
I don't know. I don't see a problem with it personally. I was, when you were sitting back there and I saw that and went, you know, before, and I went, and I didn't real, you know, know who you were and that.
Right.
It, I never thought it was even a religious thing, so.
Yeah, yeah.
That's why my comment was religious slash political, because I'm looking at the whole picture down the road, not this as an individual.
But what's political about peace?
There is nothing. It is-
I mean, there's nothing there that is going to, I mean, all we're doing is saying, peace on earth. I mean, it's not a problem. I mean, this is America. That's what we want.
There's nothing wrong with that individually. It's what the ripple effect can be.
Well, we'll worry about the ripple effect later on.
And that is true, is that, I think it's, what we try to say with a lot of our stuff is, let's take it on a case-by-case basis. Let's not worry about what the council did two years ago, four years ago, whatever. You know, you're always, as a council, you have the right to make a decision today and change it tomorrow. And if the next one comes and you don't feel as comfortable with it because of, you know, possibly a message that could be considered inflammatory, or could be considered religious or political in nature, you have every right to say no. So, I mean, you can look at them individually. You don't have to say if we do one, we do them all. It really will depend. You have the right to look at them situationally as they go.
We were careful not to choose, for instance, to put it beside President Obama's little monument down there, because we don't want it to be affiliated politically. We want it very neutral. So we're open to where the city would like to have it as far as flood safety and where it's most appropriate, talking to the veterans about what they thought. And we came up with a solution behind the, that back half circle, so that it's not imposing on their places, because they have some more construction to do, but also a place where people can stop and contemplate it. And we've worked with the city about mowing around the installation and making sure it's safe.
Right. Yeah, I don't want people to misconstrue what I'm saying, that I'm against what you're, what that says. That's not it at all. I'm worried about other ramifications-
Sure.
Because we see it throughout this country happening.
You know, I guess the question is, is if you're in general okay with it, where would you be okay having it? You know, I can see where you could have concerns with letting it go next to the Veterans Memorial, where your veterans are feeling, well-
What are the veterans, what are the veterans saying about it?
I haven't heard from them, so I don't know. That's the only thing I would worry about, is if you put it there, is it, would we have a complaint from them that we've got our memorial, there's plenty of parks, can we put there somewhere else? And I can appreciate that, too.
Sure.
So, you know, if there's a, you know, we've got a lot of parks that are very visible.
Absolutely.
Right next to that park, even.
Yeah.
Well, maybe we should check with the, with the folks involved with the memorial and-
We did meet with Ray Rapp and someone else, and they were, they totally thought that was fine. He did not get a consensus from the whole organization, but-
I think that's, what you're going to probably want to do is check with them, make sure that we've got a good viable place to put it. I mean, that doesn't take away from the Veterans Memorial.
No.
And, you know, and that, that whole organization. I mean, one person on that organization can't make that decision, so they're going to have to do that. And then, once we do that, then we can, we can look at it from there.
Okay. And who should I interact with about the decision?
Aaron.
Well, I mean, as far as checking with the VFW and stuff, just let me know, you know, how that goes. And, you know, I can, I can, you know, talk to them, too, and see where that stands. And then, and then after that, it is, I think maybe we can just, you know, have the conversation with Tom, you know, you and I and Tom, and just about what seems to be a viable location, what works for you guys that, you know, fits, I think, what you think would be a nice location for it.
Great. How about right off the front here?
And then we can bring it back. We have plenty of space here.
Yep.
You know, the other thing is, too, is that if you were asking us to put up Ten Commandments out here, I would be voting no.
I would be asking you that. I get it.
When Phil and Merlos make the point of keeping things divided here-
Absolutely.
Just so that we don't stir up things.
I understand.
But I think this, I think this is okay. I think it's a good thing. I appreciate your efforts on it. I appreciate the churches getting together and talking about it. So I'm okay with it, but-
Well, we'll talk to the VFW, and then we'll, depending on what their decision is, we'll bring it back one way or the other to the council, and you guys can decide officially where to allow it to go.
I think that's-
Things like that. And I think in this situation, it's probably better that it's a council decision always, just because, like you said, we are, it's not that this one's an issue, but we are going down that road. We're in the future. It could be. And so if that's the case, we want to make sure the precedent, as far as you guys be able to make that call's there, so.
So we should be able to, once you speak with the folks involved, with them, with the memorial, get that information back to Aaron, and then our next meeting, which is the fifteenth, we can-
Of this month.
Give a yea or nay in where you could put it.
Super. Great. Thank you for your time.
Thanks. All right. Is anybody else wishing to address us on public, or under public input? If not, we'll move on to item six of public hearing, introduction and first reading of ordinance three thirty-two permitting annexation by ordinance of the Moline property. Mr. Maroney.
Thank you. Public hearing tonight is to consider a petition for annexation of approximately fifty-two acres of land that's located just south of the new Mayo Hospital site and east of Highway fifty-two. The map here shows you the somewhat odd configuration of the proposed annexation itself. But in defense of Mr. Moline, who owns a property and is here, I'll let you know that that configuration is largely dictated by the new frontage road location coming north to south from the city. And this is the location of the new, now under construction, County twenty-four Boulevard location. So while the fifty-two acres would be annexed, including those rights of way for county road and for Minn dot related street improvements, the balance of the land generally in this location, this location, and this location, if it is annexed, would be subject to a request of rezoning, subdivision, platting, et cetera, by Mr. Moline. The two properties that are proposed, it's parts of two, one owned by Brent Moline personally, the other by Moline Enterprise LLC. Brent Moline is here tonight representing the ownership of both of those parcels. We have published a notice of the public hearing in the Beacon. We have also notified the town board, as well as all property owners adjacent to the proposed annexation area, by certified letter, and invited them and notified them of the public hearing tonight. So the council's asked to conduct the public hearing tonight. And before you turn it over to the public, I just want to mention in ordinance three thirty-two that, as we always do when we annex property, we have a sharing of tax base with the township to reflect their loss of taxes in regards to an annexation. In section two, item five, I've incorporated in the ordinance the same formula that we've used in the past with Cannon Falls Township. Andrea has informed me that the state of Minnesota will no longer allow us to calculate in the ordinance format that particular formula. So what we'll need to do is calculate what that formula would generate in dollars and actually put the dollar amount in the ordinance, subject to the approval as well by the township board. So can't use that formula anymore, but we will use it to determine the dollars. And if we do go ahead at the second reading, we'll bring that dollar amount in, and I will communicate that with the, with the town board. With that, that's all I have for presentation, unless there's any questions by the council. Mr. Moline is here tonight, and I don't see anybody else here to speak on that issue.
Okay. The public, the public, the public hearing is open. Now you can speak.
You know, with the different roads tied in there and stuff, is there any problem later on getting right-of-way and stuff to this? Or how, does that have to be dealt with?
Right-of-way is already purchased. And that's a good question, because usually what we'll do, when the subdivision comes in, we'll usually have the property owner dedicate the public right-of-way for these streets. In this instance, the highway department and county have already purchased the right-of-way that they need for their, their particular roads. If there was going to be in a plat, if there was going to be a public street, say, somewhere in this location, that right-of-way would be dedicated with the plat. That's a good question.
Okay, so it's no problem to get his right-of-way or access is off there later on?
Nope.
With the state or, is strictly county that we're dealing with here?
State of Minnesota.
Oh.
Yep.
The way you said it, Leroy.
I'm sorry about that. I mean, it sounds worse, I think, than it is, but. Okay.
You're thinking about our historical relationship. Those days are over.
Oh, cool.
How about utilities?
Utilities at this point have not been planned. There are utilities being extended by the hospital to the edge of their property, which would then be extended to service this property. But there has not been any engineering at this point. Soon as we receive a development plan from Mr. Moline, we'll sit down with the city engineer and develop a utility plan from that point.
But they are there to serve the property.
Yep. In these locations, no.
That would bring me to my next question. It would be more for Brent, if he has a rough idea of what you think you might be doing once you're in the city?
Well, thank you. To answer your question, actually, no, we're not sure. I foresee this as a mixed-use commercial. You know, it's been in the family since eighteen seventy-five, and, you know, we've been waiting a long time, and we think that there's some really great things that can happen here. For me to come out and say I can foresee certain things, about what I can foresee is what you would probably normally see at an intersection or, and an interchange by a city, going into a city, and some of those types of things. So part of the reason we haven't went any further and tried to develop something is one of the things I've learned, I'm in commercial real estate in Rapid City, is that you can have a perfect plan, and then the phone rings, and then everything changes. So we're just kind of waiting to see what will happen. We know that the phone will be ringing, and we plan on working with the city and making sure that it's a great development to coincide with the new Mayo Clinic Hospital and the city. It's going to be a great-
I'm just, I'm always curious when the city is asked to annex, okay, what-
Right.
You know, kind of what's going to happen.
I, again, especially on this, this area here, that frontage, we've always, I've always envisioned that as a mixed-use commercial.
Okay.
Yep.
That's good enough.
Yep.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Yes.
Yes.
Maybe not for you, but-
Okay.
Is this property going to be in our hospital district?
I can answer that. Referring to the area just to the north and a little bit west of this, was annexed through the moratorium period for a hospital medical-related campus. That zoning district is in the books. If Mr. Moline wanted to request some or all of this property to be rezoned, that, he could do that. But at this point, this is just going to be an urban reserve property until such time as the request for, or the request for rezoning is made.
And then at that time, we could decide-
At that time.
Whether we're going to let it in or not.
My suspicion is that we'll be dealing more with a B-two highway commercial zoning request. That would be my guess, rather than the hospital district.
Is there any other questions?
Is Mr. Moline completely aware of our specialty out there, this green gumbo clay stuff that we have in this area?
Have you had soil borings completed?
Yeah. In regards to the green shale, I remember my dad telling me about when he plowed that Jim Hammer land on the hill where the county's putting the road through. He said, there's so much shale there. He said, the horse couldn't even pull the plow through it. So, yes, we know there's, the hospital has done soil samples. The Mayo Clinic, the Cannon Falls Hospital, we've been in contact with them for over a decade. They've been wanting to purchase some of our land. And at one point, a few years ago, they actually did extensive soil samples in that area. So we know what we've got.
Yeah. Yeah, just, I mean, we've got some restrictions on building and stuff because of that soil. And I just wanted to make sure that everybody is on the same playing field.
Mm-hmm.
The other thing I liked, what you said before, was the words, "Working with the city." And that's really what we want to do. We want to work with you.
You bet.
And you work with us. And we can do a lot of good things.
Yep.
But that's the magic there is working together.
Yep. We, we've had an opportunity to sell the whole parcel a long time ago. We never pursued that. We didn't think that that, it was, it was for housing at that time. And we always envisioned something different than that, you know, because of its location, the proximity, the highway access. And then, of course, now with the interchange being there and the hospital being there. Um, yeah, it's, it's a long-term project, but we're really excited about working with, with the city. And, and the Mayo, Mayo Clinic, we've, we've been in meetings with everybody. I, many years ago, Aaron and the county and the Mayo and, and so everybody is, is trying to be on the same page.
Right. Thank you.
You bet. Thank you.
Any further discussion? If not, at this time, we will close the public hearing. And the chair will take a motion to approve the first reading of ordinance number three thirty-two annexation, annexing approximately fifty-two acres to the city of Cannon Falls.
So moved.
I will second.
A motion by Merle, second by Bill. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. That brings us up to the consent agenda. Items on this area of the agenda may be adopted or they may be removed and placed on the business area of the agenda for discussion purposes before approving. Those at home, I'll read the consent agenda. Item A is the just and correct claims for the accounting period ending September the twenty-fifth, two thousand thirteen. Item B, the meeting minutes for September seventeenth, two thousand thirteen city council meeting. Item C, the BDPI grant application approval. Item D, resolution twenty thirty-seven, accepting a donation for the purchase of a Lucas CPR compression device for the ambulance department. Item E, resolution twenty thirty-eight, accepting a donation for the fire department. Item F, burn permit request. Item G, the Cannon Cruiser Car Club annual request. Item H, disposal of excess property, and item I, disposal of forfeited vehicles. Are there any items anyone wishes to bring down?
C.
Item C will become item eight A, which is the BDPI grant. Are there any others? Seeing as there are none, the chair will take a motion to approve the consent agenda with the removal of item C down to council business.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Merle, second by Bill. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Approved. And that moves us on to council business. Item A, A, the BDPI grant application approval. And I received a letter here from Positively Minnesota, just saying that we had been approved for the grant for the fifteen thousand.
Okay.
Just today. If I can get it open here. Just saying that the, the police inform us that the city of Cannon Falls, application for greater, or business development, public infrastructure program grant's been approved in the amount of fifteen thousand. Uh, we are pleased to provide the financial assistance to the city funds to assist with providing infrastructure to Raw Bistro, a dog food manufacturer that would like street curb and gutter and storm sewer in order to mediate flooding the area. This award will provide the necessary resources for continued economic growth and enhance employment in the community and surrounding area. All parties involved in the preparation of the city's application can be proud of this award. Signed by Katie Clark, Saban, Commissioner of DEE.
Okay. Well, um, the last time we talked about this, I kind of had concerns. I guess the concerns I got is we, uh, we were supposed to, a couple of years ago, get that sewer main put underneath the river over there. We were supposed to eventually get the water main taken care of over there that's on the old bridge. Uh, last winter, that water main sprung a pretty good leak over there. We got the gas main hanging on the other side of that old bridge. I'm just concerned is if we're gonna, we gotta deal with that bridge. I know on the bridge rating, that, that thing is not rated very high over there. Um, we have to deal with that bridge situation someday. If we do straighten it out, um, the water main and the gas main and all that issues has got to be dealt with at some time. I find it kind of ironic that we, we can't get grant money to put the sewer underneath the river. Um, we can't get grant money to get rid of the water main problem. We can't get grant money to get the trail to our overflow parking. But we can get fifteen thousand to put in a grass area in front of a building here. Now, I, I want them to have that and to do this, but what bothers me is, is that we got that, we started on a twenty-four-foot deck and now I hear we're gonna have a twenty-six. So, at least we, hopefully, we got enough three feet left there to get a walking area down that one side. If I do look at this drawing, they, they act like there's gonna be a storm sewer holding pond by the, where the stop sign is there, which is roughly only about twenty feet from that building, which is a basement underneath that building. And I keep wondering why across the street, I think, is our holding pond area. So, while we've got that pond, we've got a nice white street there right now with the parking basically off the street. And now we're, that's probably their land, so that's their business. But now we're gonna put parking back in the street, take another ten feet out of that street, driving through there. The other thing is, is that it was in our sewer and water plans at some point. I remember reading about that, redo these streets and sewer and water over there in our five-year plan. Um, how does this all tie into when we get to that? So, it's kind of a thing where, um, I was hoping on the end of the building, the city had a wide enough right-of-way, that we could have done some parking even off the street if they didn't want us right up by their building. Um, for people to park there and less bikers down in the parking lot downtown. We can get some of them over there, take right off to the trail. Um, the whole thing makes me nervous that we're, we're doing all this because of a, a grant or a fund and we're also contributing twenty-five thousand and we're also taking sixty-five and thirty-five from the storm fund. Now, that sixty-five, is that over on top of the total of seventy-five or is that part of that?
I'll back up and answer most of those, but I'll let Dave answer first, just the general why we're doing it, sort of part, why, why they're asking for it.
Yeah, I could refer to the, the graphic too, to maybe best address some of Leroy's questions. Just to be clear of that, what's on the project. The Raw Bistro, front of the building, the north face of the building is, is in this area right here. Cannon Street, Third Street, the bridge is over here. There's been concern by the property owner of Raw Bistro, who also owns the residence just to the west of that, for the ponding situation after storms. Raw Bistro is, is continually bringing in more people, more customers into their facility. And it's been kind of an ongoing concern of the owners that after our rain events, that there is ponding all over in front of that building. So, one of the issues that we try to address with this project is, is adequate and better stormwater drainage. And that's going to be handled primarily with a new curb, which would be in this location, coming back to the east around the corner and then over to the, the Third, Third Street Bridge. So, we're gonna direct our storm drainage with the help of a curb in that area. And there is a rain garden area at the intersection itself, which is again, there to help control the drainage that comes beyond or from beyond this particular site, moving east in front of this building. So, we do need that additional storage area for the, the stormwater itself. We have an advantage, the reason that we're going on, on the west side of Third Street, there's an existing stormwater pipe that's, that's in this location. Now, we'll actually be going from that rain garden underground into that existing storm drain. The first plan that we saw a couple of years ago, we actually were, Leroy, gonna go across Third Street. The problem doing that is we needed additional land in order ultimately to drain back to the river. The property owner of Raw Bistro has consented to allow us to have a fifteen-foot easement across that property and allow us to tie into that, that, that existing storm drain. So, it's actually saving us all some money to do it that way.
You know, that part, Dave, alongs you're on that subject, is when, we do have storm drain problems over there. I mean.
Yep.
We got storm drains that are high or low or in halftime, they don't work. So, to me, when we redo this street, going the other way up the hill towards the elevator and the other way, we, we are, once we curb that, it isn't curbed now, but once we curb it, we're gonna, we're gonna have more drainage problems. So, we are gonna have to have some kind of more storage, to me, at that time.
With the larger area.
And, uh, this pond, I'm sure is not gonna be adequate from this standpoint.
No, I, I agree. There will be additional stormwater improvements in the future as Third Street and the balance of Cannon is, is fixed. Now, there's the other variable, and that might make the point on requesting the grant money in this particular project. Because we know that in, currently on the current plan, it's not till two thousand nineteen that we get back into this neighborhood for infrastructure replacement. And the concern that we had of the property owner is, yes, certain infrastructure improvements are needed to take care of these problems and you can pay for those now, but yeah, you can also pay for them again in two thousand nineteen when we come back and finish the job. So, right now, we've had kind of the challenge of designing a, a curb and gutter storm draw, water system that can be preserved in two thousand nineteen reuse, rather than having to be redone. But we can't go back and, and, and have them pay for something now and then also have them pay for something in the future. And that's where the grant application came in. That's why we sought the grant. Because we were, just weren't comfortable working through the EDA and with Raw Bistro, that we could find a way that we could get this project financed one hundred percent, eighty percent, fifty percent at, at, at a cost to the property owner. That's why we sought the grant. So, what, what we do in this project will be retained and preserved and designed into those future improvements on Third and Cannon, when those happen in two thousand nineteen or whenever, whenever that time comes. The parking out here, what we're really doing is patching four to five feet of blacktop. You all know the condition of that street. It's not good.
Right.
And so, we're, we are doing some patching here. That will be lost in the future when the street is rebuilt in two thousand nineteen, if that's the year that it happens. But right now, in order to accommodate the, the visitors and employees that are coming to and from that building, to fix that street, to hold this at least until two thousand nineteen or so, till the actual street is, is completed, is something that we felt, you know, really needed to be done, as does the property owner. It is creating more Boulevard green space, which the property owner really likes in this plan. It gives them some ability to expand their building, the existing operating facility that they have, as well as the, the property next door by making the improvement the way that we have designed it here. So, there's multiple objectives here, obviously, but to find a way to, to finance about a fifty thousand dollar project cost, this isn't a big project, but we weren't gonna be able to finance this one hundred percent, you know, by the property owner, which again, is why we sought the grant and why we sought some assistance from, from the city. And we've also talked to the EDA about this project. And the final thing, and you remember this, Leroy, back on the planning commission? I think this is where we first started talking about that too, about controlling this intersection from a, from a transportation perspective. So, that's part of this as well. And it's really taken a couple of years to get to this point through a change of property ownership, kind of some plans and replans, new engineering, and then looking for financing to put it together.
Well, I'm kind of amazed if you get this done for the seventy-five or whatever it is, because we blacked out the alley behind the fire hall and that was thirty-eight thousand, just to do that. And that was one lane shot. So, I mean, there's a lot of curb and there's a lot of stuff involved here. It was kind of amazing to me, the cost was as low as it was.
It's the engineer's estimate, best guess at this point.
And, uh, you know, the, if you drive over there during the day, especially in the summertime, the walking traffic is unbelievable. And, you know, I, I know when we dealt with the west side, we, for some reason, we had people that just hate sidewalks for some reason. I don't know what the deal was there. But there is so much traffic going to that bridge that I wish there was some way we could get a, a spent sidewalk, at least in that intersection. And it would be best to me if we could somehow someday get a sidewalk all, all the way over to Cedar Ridge. Because there's people walking there all the time and they walk on the street. So, definitely, uh, in the planning, at least keep us a painted area that we could say we tried to put some safety into it, but even a sidewalk right at the curb would be better to me than nothing at all. So, um, I think you've answered most of my questions. I, I did quite understand why, you mentioned the water problem. You know, I think they've got about ten or twelve parking stalls in front at their angle parking now. And they really aren't gonna gain anything as far as parking stalls. It might even be less. Uh, also, the house alongside of them, I assume they own that too?
Yes. Yes.
So, I didn't see an opening to that house. I take it there's not gonna be an opening there or just a sidewalk entrance or something?
Yeah, there's, be sidewalk entrances to the house and then there's a driveway entrance to the existing building. And then there'll be an entrance to the main doors of the, of the existing plant. So, there'll actually be three concrete connections back to the street. And the parking, um, it really is about the same as what they've got now. It's parallel rather than the diagonal. They're very comfortable with that. And, and what, what it does for us, Leroy, is it allows us to much easier, much more easily tie into that curb and gutter in the future if we keep it out in this alignment, than if we brought it back in like it kind of exists today. So, when that change was made and we learned that ten spaces was sufficient for what they wanted to accomplish, that was actually a sigh of relief for us too. Because it allowed us to do a plan that we think will more easily be able to tie into in the future.
Okay, so did, did, are you the one that helped with this grant stuff or who took care of that?
I've participated in it, yes.
So, could we work on this grants for this other stuff too that?
We, we can, we're always looking, we're always looking at our opportunities.
A little higher priority than this, but I think we need to do this.
Yeah.
Hi. Is there any further discussion? If not, the chair will take a motion to affirm the approval of financing of up to twenty-five thousand, three hundred and ninety-four dollars, resolution number twenty twenty-nine, of the total estimated project cost of fifty thousand, seven hundred and eighty-seven dollars.
I'll second.
Motion by Merle, second by Bill. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carries. And that takes us to reports. Mr. Maroney. Nothing else?
Yeah, thank you.
Brenda? Chief?
Just a couple of things. Hard to believe we're already into October. Next week will be homecoming week. Um, that always brings unique challenges for the police department. We would like to remind the residents, if they should see behavior that they find suspicious in nature, perhaps young people running around with rolls of white paper or cartons of things that may, or may not resemble eggs, to please let us know. Um, you know, typically, we, we, we take sort of a, uh, not a heavy-handed enforcement, but we're, you know, we're, we're trying to make sure that the, the antics don't get out of hand and, you know, the property isn't damaged and the parents are contacted. Um, it's worked well for us. We especially like the, the tips on the toilet papering. Uh, we collect all of that and turn it over to our local food shelf, who's very happy to receive a bunch of rolls. Um, and it keeps it out of our property system. Uh, parking, uh, will be the same for that as it is for any other event. Uh, just remind people that there's some parking restrictions on nineteen. We do have the overflow lot and the park and ride lot available to be used. So, feel free to take advantage of them. Um, and we will have officers and hopefully reserves that'll be present down at the game just to be there and visit with people. Please walk up, say hi to them. They're glad to be there. That's all I have.
Can't talk?
I'm gonna try. I apologize for that.
Don't know?
I just want to mention the toilet paper is on sale right now.
Is a coupon required?
No.
Rod?
Nothing.
Bill?
Uh, just, um, this afternoon, Public Works Commission met and, uh, Just this afternoon, Public Works Commission met and as Mr. Schramsky earlier talked about the Eastside project and they are a little bit behind schedule, but as I understand it, by the end of the month, everything should be virtually completed, wear code, all that sort of stuff. I think that's the major item we discussed, so that should be wrapping up soon and all ready to go.
Start working on the next one.
Yeah.
Leroy?
Aaron, you're supposed to pass on to the public works at the Stedman's, say thanks for finally getting in that no parking sign down there that people are blocking off the river. Thanks for taking care of that. The other thing, I had some elderly people ask me about the media com meeting, I believe that's like?
Twenty-second, twenty-second.
Second or something, October.
Yep.
Some of them asked or said they probably couldn't be here, so I said to drop a note with their thoughts and send it to Aaron, so if you start getting letters, you know what that's about?
Yep, they'll all get passed on to the cable commission.
That's it. Thank you.
Jay?
Nothing.
Mars?
That's fine.
And I have nothing this evening, so thanks, everybody, and it's time we'll adjourn.